We'll call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of July 18th. We'll note, all commissioners are present. First item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing done, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Second. We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All who say nay, the motion carries.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I do have one change.
Oh.
On the meeting of July 11th, number eight.
You're on the minutes?
Yes.
You're ahead of me, Mr. Steiner.
Motion by me, and I was not here.
Okay. So we'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Mr. Commissioner Carson wishes to discuss the minutes, okay? You're quicker than I am.
Correction in the minutes.
Okay, what page?
I did not make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
You didn't?
I did not. Second last page.
Okay. Who made the motion to adjourn the meeting?
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay. So we should correct that to Mr. Altman. I also have a correction for the minutes. The part on the Elks Building update, there's a sentence in there that says, "The city does not have the authority to reject or agree to any business partner that may take on this project." We do have the authority.
President Johnson, you're correct. We do have that authority.
So I think that should read, "The city does have," so we should eliminate the word "not." And then the sentence following that, it said, "President Johnson states the entity in which Brinkman is suggesting is credible in the city's view." And I don't think that's what I said. Because at that time, and still today, we don't have any financial information on this business. We've done some background checks, which came out okay. We've done some reference checks, which were mixed. So I don't think I said, "It's credible in the city's view." And I would like to have that sentence struck from the minutes. If I said that, I regret saying that, but I don't think I did. Are there any other changes to the minutes? So we would have those three things changing. Who motioned to adjourn the meeting, striking the word "not" there under the Elks Building update, and then striking that last sentence. Would there be a motion to correct the minutes as stated there?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. We have to vote on that, excuse me. We'll vote, Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Now, we have the last three items of the consent agenda, items B through B, C, and D. Are there any items there you'd wish to discuss?
I'll move to approve items B, C, and D of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move to tab four. And the first item we have there is to hear the financial report from Mrs. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. I'd like to highlight a few items from the financial report through June. We'll begin with the general fund report. With half of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3 million, and we're 98 percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees, which include our financial institution tax and our franchise fees, is 68 percent collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmental revenues, which include our highway distribution tax and our oil production tax, is 36 percent collected compared to budget. Our licenses, fees, and services, which include such things as building permit revenue and oil royalties, is 34 percent collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is up 29 percent over last year. This category also includes the municipal court fines, and those are up 24 percent over last year. Our sales of city lots and equipment shows a total of $1,267,000 through June. The decrease from last month is due to the purchase of the Wells Fargo lot next to the historic Elks Building. Our total general fund revenues equal $6.4 million through June, and we're 69 percent collected compared to budget. Our general fund expenses through June include our general government, which includes administration, court, and finance, and is 50 percent expended compared to budget. Our public safety, which includes police and fire, is 45 percent expended compared to budget. Our engineering and streets is 43 percent expended compared to budget. And our cultural services, which includes museum and forestry, is 33 percent expended compared to budget. Our contingency and reserve includes the West River Community Center major maintenance reserve, and our contingency that includes our 20 percent share of the regional transit building. Our total general fund expenses equal $4.4 million through June, and we're 47 percent expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, this slide shows our water and wastewater funds, which we have combined in 2011 to better reflect light operations. Our revenue is $2.7 million through June, which is 55 percent collected compared to budget, and 35 percent more than last year at this time. The large increase in revenue in 2011 is due to bulk water sales at our water vendor. The expenses total $1.7 million, and is 46 percent expended compared to budget. Our solid waste fund also shows an increase in revenue due to added accounts for both residential and commercial growth. Our revenue is $1.3 million through June, which is 58 percent collected compared to budget, and our expenses are $774,000, which is 41 percent expended compared to budget. In our sales tax reports, in the 1 percent sales tax fund, we've received $363,000 of revenue in June, which is up 34 percent for the year. We have reforecasted our sales tax revenue projection to reflect a 20 percent increase over last year. Our expenses include $368,000 paid towards job creation and senior programs, and $800,000 paid towards our Badlands Activity Center pledge. This slide also shows the sales tax refund that was paid to the state due to the overpayment of local taxes by a single taxpayer in 2010. Our half percent sales tax, we received $181,000 of revenue in June, and it's also up 34 percent for the year. This slide also reflects a reforecast of a 20 percent increase over last year. Our expenses include $503,000 towards the West River Community Center bond. The sales tax refund line item shown here is also due to the overpayment of local taxes.
Mrs. Johnson, there will be a second bond payment later this year out of this fund?
Correct, in December.
Okay.
In the hospitality tax, we received $62,000 of revenue in June, which is up 37 percent over last year. We have reforecast our hospitality tax revenue projection to reflect a 35 percent increase over last year. Our expenses total $351,000, which include our BAC pledge payment, the CVB Special Events Grant, and their subsidy. Our occupancy tax breakdown shows revenues and expenditures total $179,000 through June. This is a 96 percent increase over last year. All occupancy tax revenues minus a small admin fee are paid out to the CVB monthly. The street projects report shows we received $95,000 in revenue, and we expended $314,000 towards those projects through June. The reforecast column in your report shows the increase in the 50 percent share of the 1 percent sales tax that will be expected due to the higher sales tax revenues. We have added a schedule this year to the report for the Development Impact Fee Program. This schedule shows the impact fee projects that have been approved and the funds available for future projects, which stands at a negative $112,000 as of June. The timing of construction compared to special assessments received will help alleviate this negative balance. And our general fund reforecast shows the revenues that have been reforecast since the budget was approved last September. Most changes are due to the impact of oil development in our area, which increased considerably in the fourth quarter of 2010. The reforecast of sales tax was included as an additional column on the respective reports. Those are some of the highlights of the financial statements. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Are there any comments or questions regarding the financial report or the financial statement? Thank you. Hearing done, the chair to entertain a motion to accept the financial report.
I'll make that motion.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Takes us to item B, compensable factors. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson and Commissioners. The compensable factors is a system that was developed in-house to replace the Fox Lawson study that the city completed approximately 12 years ago. What these systems do is they provide a systematic process by which we determine which positions, which essential job factors should be compensated as part of our grade and step system. So what you have before you is our suggestion to move towards, and I can tell you that this document was reviewed by our Civil Service Commission and recommended, but probably more importantly, our Human Resources Committee, which is made up of staff throughout the city, also reviewed this document. They did tweak some of the language, and they are recommending this as well. And I want to thank that committee for the work that they've done. It was chaired by Police Chief Rumel, and they've done a nice job of presenting or refining this document from its original form. Just to point a few things out, the compensable factors that have been selected as primary are education, experience, complexity of duties, and budget authority, independent judgment, decision-making, and problem-solving, leadership and supervisory responsibilities, relationships to others, and in working environment. What happens is, on every position description within the city, they are judged accordingly to these compensable factors, and they're scored a points system. That points system on the following page in your document, if you go to point value assignment, shows how many points are available for each of those compensable factors. All of them have a maximum point of 200, except working environment, which has a point value of 100 as the maximum. You can see how they're broken down in terms of scoring. And if you go to the next page, it will talk to you about how there's, what you need to achieve the level of scoring that corresponds to the points. So as you go through each position description, they're all scored according to this document. And then in the end, the composite score that is achieved determines which grade your position description will be in. And then that grade then determines the salary level that you'll be paid with the City of Dickinson. Now, I consulted with Attorney Coling on this document, and Fox Lawson is not referenced in our ordinance. So there really is no need for the city commission to take action on the document. We wanted to make sure that you were aware that this was being, was taking place. You certainly can make a motion to accept it if you so choose, but you're not required to make any kind of endorsement of the project if you don't desire. So what I'd really hope is that if you have feedback regarding how this document was created, the system by which it was created, I'd love to hear that, because if there isn't any, this is the system we're going to use to do any further changes in regrading that may be done. And we do intend to review every position description and then apply this standard. So with that, I'll conclude my report on this document and ask if there's any questions I can answer.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Kessel?
Mr. President, Mr. Kessel, I don't remember if we talked about this last meeting or not, but I know you said you had run some positions through the process already. Do you expect this to make a big difference in current grade steps at all?
President Johnson, Commissioner, I don't believe it's going to make a big difference. The first process, of course, is we have to look at our position descriptions and make sure they're accurate and relative to today, what they're doing today. If I was to put a guess on it, I'd say about a half a dozen positions may change their grade. They may move up or down a grade when we implement this system. The, at least Police Chief Rumel has concurred with that estimate. I've asked him the same question, and he feels the same way, that there'll be about half a dozen maybe that move from one grade to another.
You're not anticipating any big budget consequences, though?
No, we're not, Commissioner Jackson. We, in fact, we have had that discussion, if this should be fully implemented in 2012, or if we should wait for its implementation from a financial standpoint until 2013. I don't know that we have a good answer for you today, but the variable there is getting those position descriptions reviewed and placed on the schedule. That's going to take some time. And we are looking at getting some help from an outside agency to assist us with that process. We could do it much quicker if we did that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kessel, what happens if an employee does go down a grade? What's your thought process on that?
President Johnson, Commissioner Altman, my initial reaction is, I don't think any employee should be dropped in terms of their salary.
Okay.
I think they should retain their salary. What may happen is, they simply may not get an increase for a year or two until they come, until they catch up to that salary level. I'm assuming that there's only going to be a one-grade drop if that happens. So there should be a short period of time where they should be getting increases then down the road. Along with the cost of living increase that the city commission provides will also bring that salary levels up. So I'm hoping that when that occurs, it'll freeze their salary for a period of time, and I'm hoping that that period of time is a short one.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, just a comment. I like the document. I think it simplifies this a lot, and not only for us, but for the employees also. And with the employees endorsing it, I think they probably understand it a lot better than Fox Lawson.
Thank you, Commissioner Steiner. I can tell you that the Human Resources Committee that worked on this feels the exact same way that you just stated.
I think this will help you if the city continues to grow, and if we do grow, we're likely to add some new jobs that are new job descriptions, and it's going to help you place those jobs in the grade system, I think, more accurately.
Thank you, President Johnson. This is definitely more understandable by staff than Fox Lawson was. I agree.
So no action is required if, I guess if we agree. If we disagree, then we should take some action. Does anybody care to take any action? Hearing done, we'll just thank you for your report, and go on to item C, redistricting committee member. And Mr. Kessel, are you introducing that also?
I am, President Johnson. This is a request on behalf of Stark County. They are working their way through redistricting, of course, with the 2010 census being it's on the decade. Redistricting is something that is concerning them, something they have to address. So they are required by state law to put together an ad hoc committee that will meet, discuss the issues regarding redistricting, and what those new boundaries may be. In talking with Auditor Haig, she feels as though this meeting will be short in duration. She has some suggestions already in mind, so she's thinking that it'll only be a time commitment of an hour or two. But she would like a member of the governing body, the city commission, to serve on that
Well, I'd like to suggest Commissioner Frenzel, just because he has a good knowledge of the county. He's been involved in the political process for a number of years, and I think his background would fit very well into this activity.
It would be fine with me.
Well, you need a majority, so.
It would still be fine with me.
We can get one more vote out of this crowd, and you'll have.
Fine with me.
Fine with you? Mr. Coling, do we need a motion on that appointment?
Oh, you wouldn't need a motion, yes, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Move your point. Mr. Joe Frenzel, the redistricting committee.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Motion carries. So we'll go to city administrator reports. Mr. Kessel, you just want to take them one at a time there?
I do, and actually, the first one, I'm going to defer to Attorney Coling. He's to talk about crew camp housing, since he's leading that ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President Commissioners. The ordinance in front of you, was in front of you for your information and comment. This is substantially similar to the ordinance that was before you at the last meeting, which you approved first reading on. As we discussed before, this ordinance would establish a procedure whereby if someone wanted to come in and operate a crew camp, it would require a special use permit or a conditional use permit that would be granted by the City of Dickinson. Additionally, the ordinance provides for some minimum design standards as far as annexing to city limits, providing urban services, roads, water, and sewer, that would be, meet all the design standards that are otherwise imposed by the city. A couple of additional design standards that we have incorporated into this version of the ordinance that were discussed either at this meeting or at the planning and zoning meeting last week, is the possibility that this board could require a minimum lot size for a crew camp. If in your discretion, a minimum lot size was required, that is a condition that you could impose on any individual applicant. As well, you may, on any individual application, require that the land be platted as a subdivision. In your discretion, each individual application could be judged on its merits. And also, I'd point you to paragraph nine on the second page, on section 39.13004, allows for this board to impose any other condition or restriction on the issuance of a special use permit that you would deem necessary and desirable. There is, or was some discussion at the planning and zoning meeting as to whether the city ought to require things like a provision of food services at a crew camp, a provision of laundry services. And it's tough in the abstract to really decide whether any of those services ought to be included within any individual application. So that is something that you would have the authority to decide on any individual application as they come before you. Another change that is made in this version of the ordinance, section right above that, section 39.13.003, simply provides that the permanent fee for a crew camp would be imposed by the city incorporated into the city's fee schedule, and you would determine that on the basis of the services that are provided. The previous version of this ordinance had what I think was a little bit of a complicated way of determining the permanent fee, and we've taken that out and simply left it at your discretion to impose that pursuant to the annual fee schedule that the city imposes. Other than that, the ordinance is substantially the same as what you've seen before, and we would invite your comment and your ideas on how to go about putting this ordinance into effect.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coling. Comments by commissioners or questions?
I have a couple, Mr. President. I think we've talked before as a board that we would probably scrutinize the location of a crew camp, if there's one proposed. And I'm wondering if we're comfortable that we have that authority in this ordinance. Mr. Coling, you referred to item nine of section 004. I guess that's really a catch-all kind of authorization for us, or authority for us. I also wonder, in section 006, fourth line, we talk about rendering the applicant or the premises to be licensed, and whether or not that would be improper or unfit. Would that help us in approving or disapproving a particular location?
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioner Jackson. I think any application that comes before you, you'll have to judge both the applicant, whether they're qualified and able to operate such a facility, and then whether the location, the land itself, is appropriate for the operation of a crew camp. And that's section 006, is intended to give you the authority to do that and make that at your discretion, both as to the applicant and as to the land affected.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. The second thing I wonder about, you know, we're going to want to do this carefully, but I continue to believe that, that crew camp, you know, may be part of the equation in solving some of the issues we have with our growth. I find myself wondering about the five years. Is a five-year permit enough for an investor, whoever that may be, to make that kind of investment, knowing that he, she, only has a guarantee for five years? I don't know the answer to that. I'm wondering, is that something that's going to discourage a crew camp? I don't know if any of us have a good.
I think Mr. Kurtan wants to respond to that.
Mr. President, Commissioner, with respect to your question, I feel five years would be sufficient for it. An inquiry of a recent visit that I went up to Williston for their crew camp in a pretty big facility, it's a very good facility, and it's my understanding they could recoup their capital investment within a couple of years. So a five-year project would be sufficient for that. Even eliminating potentially to two to three years, they would be able to recoup their capital investment and still make a profit on it.
Okay, well, that's good to hear.
Mr. Coling, the answer you gave to Mr. Jackson's previous question, I'm wondering if you could incorporate your answer kind of into one of the opening sections of this ordinance, just to remind commissioners what their responsibilities are. I like what you said about, we have two basic responsibilities, one to judge the applicant, and two to, you know, judge the location. And I think having that language in there, even though it may be redundant, is good language I'd like to answer.
Almost a sort of preamble or something?
Right, yeah. Here's your basic responsibility. You have two basic responsibilities here, so. At the previous meeting, Commissioner Jackson raised the issue on alcohol, and currently the ordinance as drafted says, "A possession of alcohol shall not be permitted within the crew housing facility." And I thought a little bit about that this past week, and I'm wondering if really that shouldn't be struck, and let the operator of the crew camp decide if that's a rule they wish to impose or not. Mr. Kurtan, did that topic come up at all when you were visiting crew camps in the Williston area?
Mr. President, yes, that topic came up, and it was felt by the vendor that eliminating or prohibiting alcohol, and they were very strict about that, was a benefit for them. It eliminated any potential problems. I would imagine that it significantly probably limited their insurance rates as well. So you avoid, you avoid problems, or unnecessary problems that could. So you avoid problems, or unnecessary problems, that could evolve, you know, with the consumption of alcohol. It makes a lot of sense for them to do that.
Would they prefer that it be in our ordinance, or would they prefer the?
I asked them on that topic, and they were -- they would be fine with that. That's their policy. That's Target Logistics' policy for it. Makes sense to them. For us, we'd get a qual -- I think we'd get a more quality development. We wouldn't have to worry about the potential of a fight in which police or sheriff would have to come out there to, you know, break up the situation. You have a lot of people that are combined in a small, little area, and, you know, limiting alcohol is one way to prevent some potential problems.
So your recommendation would be that it just stay as -- remain as written? Okay.
I would, if I could add, Mr. President, that I would think that, you know, it's in our code there, but that's, you know, if that was something that the board on a particular one felt that they needed to do, you could probably have a variance for that as part of your application, so. But I think it's warranted to have it within the ordinance.
Well, I don't have a problem with it staying in the ordinance. I was thinking in terms of, they usually have their own set of rules, and to me, it's not a whole lot of difference whether you're staying in an apartment and decide you want to have a drink, or if you're staying here and have a drink.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Steiner?
Just a comment on that. I think when you first think about it, you know, no alcohol on their premise, it sounds like the good thing. But for the same reason that they don't want one, I think it can become our problem, the city's problem, where there's no drinking or alcohol beverages on their premise, so they got to take care of it. It may force the issue in the city, at some of our places of business. You know, so I'm kind of, you know, don't know which way to lean on this here, because, you know, for the exact same things that you were talking about there, that they don't want them, why would we take 100% of that when they could allow some of it on their premise and handle their problems there? Just a little food for thought there.
Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson, I share some of the same concerns that Commissioner Steiner has just suggested. One of my concerns is that if there is no alcohol allowed on site, that they will come into the community and drink alcohol at one of our establishments and then return. If they're returning after drinking, of course, that means there's people on the road who have been drinking, not that there isn't today, but we could be talking about a significant amount of crew camps, and therefore, a portion of them may be drinking and driving. And anytime we can limit that, I think we're better off. So it is with some reservation that I see that language in our ordinance. I'm not necessarily against it, but I do think we have to have all the information as you go forth and make a decision, that that's entirely a possibility.
Those are all good thoughts. Let's hold them for a few minutes. We have two timetable agenda items, one at 5:00 and one at 5:10, and it's a few minutes after 5:00, so let's move over to tab three. And the first 5:00 item is a special use permit, and we'll let Planner Carton introduce these two items both.
Mr. President, City Commission. Mr. Lance is proposing to construct a one-building convenience storage facility in the agricultural zoning district which requires a special use permit. The site is located in southwest quadrant of 8th Street Southeast and 10th Avenue Southeast. Their submitted site plan is basic. City staff will ensure the consistency of the applicable development regulations, more specifically section 3906005, which specifically states additional requirements for convenient storage facilities. The entrance to the site will be located off of 10th Avenue Southeast, and city staff will ensure that the entrance is at least 60 feet from the intersection to avoid any vehicle conflicts. The planning commission and city staff recommends approval, and with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Hearing done, would there be a motion regarding the special use permit?
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner?
I move we approve the special use permit as applied.
Sir, second?
I'll second it.
We have the motion seconded. Any discussion at all? Hearing done, will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, while we have five minutes, we'll go back to the discussion on the crew camp housing ordinance. Mr. Kessel, had you finished your comments, sir, or did you wish to make a few more?
President Johnson, I would conclude my remarks.
Okay.
I have a comment. I guess if we struck the alcohol provision from 2009, wouldn't we be able to, on a, you know, case-by-case study under the 2004, impose that at a later time if we wanted to? If we struck it from the ordinance, we would still be able to limit alcohol on a site-by-site basis, rather than having a blanket statement that prevents it on all.
Mr. President, Commissioner Altman, that's correct. You could apply it individually on a case-by-case basis pursuant to section 004. I guess the question is, is what you want to create as the baseline? If you want to create the baseline as a prohibition against alcohol, and then vary that on a case-by-case basis, or create a baseline where you would permit alcohol and then prohibit it on a case-by-case basis?
You know, I'd be interested in a comment by the police department. If you're prepared to comment now, again, you know, we have plenty of ordinances that are difficult to enforce. Is this, would we be adding to this in terms of, how would you enforce this?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. Two weeks ago, Captain Sciani and I did take a trip to Williston. We did meet with the authorities up there. And we also did get a tour of Target Logistics, where Hella Burton has the majority of their staffs staying. Now, it's a policy of Target Logistics not to allow alcohol on their site. I believe that would be the direction for us to go. If an individual is 21 years of age, it would be difficult to enforce that legally to have that in the state of North Dakota. The majority of people that you're going to be having staying at this reputable man camp are going to be individuals putting long hours in. When they're off, they're looking to go back home and spend time with their family. I don't think you're going to see a whole lot of issues where these individuals are going to be, you know, looking for a place to go out late, drink, and then come back. Talking with the staff up there, they had one incident where an individual did come back with some alcohol on his breath, and a cleaning person did find some alcohol in his room. That individual was asked to leave the premises, and he was terminated from the company. The facility we've seen, it's pretty much self-reliant. They have food services, cleaning services, laundry on site. It's really self-contained. My suggestion would be to make it, allow it to be a policy of the vendor, rather than create a law that we'd have a difficult time enforcing.
Okay. Any questions for Captain Dosenter? If it's not in there, it does make it the responsibility of the operator. If it is in there and there's a problem, you know, the operator, unless they have a specific policy reinforcing this, it kind of becomes the city or maybe in the county's I don't feel strongly one way or the other that much, but.
I would guess I would prefer to strike it from the ordinance and let the entity decide for themselves what they want to do with their business and with their man camp. Because, again, the enforcement of it, like you said, is going to be difficult at best.
Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson, I tend to agree with that. Understanding that all man camps are going to be different sizes, different services available, we keep referring to a single provider, but they're not the only. And so it's going to be, I think the commission should retain the right to manage this issue individually, based on the provider and the type of services they want. Because security isn't provided at all of them, so our police force is certainly taxed. You've seen reports that year over year, they're up 800 calls per service. So anytime that we can enlist the assistance of another provider to take away some of them calls before they happen, I think we're better off.
In the list of requirements, we don't necessarily require them to provide security, do we?
No, Mr. President, we do not.
The, Mr. Carton, the crew camps that, you know, you visited and the information you have, is it, is security one of the things they generally do, in your view?
Mr. President, with respect to your question, the two that I visited, they had security for that. They had a security person as you come in. They would check to make sure that you had card, that you are the resident or the person for that facility, so that you don't get other people visiting, or other people that shouldn't be there. Also, they had a security card, or the ones you get typically for hotels. Anywhere you went, you would have to swipe that, when you went into your room, when you went to the laundry facility, when you went to get food, when you entered the building itself, when you exited the building, and even when you left. And if somehow you didn't do that, and you left the building, then there would be a warning sign that something went awry, for them to verify that. So they have internal security for their benefit, also for the benefit for all. So they would have their own security force. In addition to that, they would have a way for the employers, and this is something that Target Logistics had, they could provide a report on every single person, because they're given a card, of when they came in, when they left, when they ate, and the rest for their employers, for them to check on to make sure that, okay, that you're coming there, that you have sufficient time to sleep, instead of coming in at 2:00 in the morning and going to work, you know, a 12-hour day. So there's a benefit to that, and I think that that's something that we should look into if that's not provided, especially when you're talking about the bigger camps, when you're maybe 100 to 200 or bigger, that ability to be able to check on that, to assist the police, also, as part of their application. I think that, I wanted to just add a comment that, within this, I think that we should have the ability also, as a city commission, to limit that. Just because somebody comes in and says, "I want to put 400 units in a particular location," if we feel as a city that we don't feel comfortable with that, then we could specify a smaller size. I think that that would be appropriate as well, based upon its location, or based upon the cumulative effect of that camp in addition to others, maybe in the general vicinity, we feel that we should limit the size of that one. So I think that that should be also a factor for this as well.
All right, well, that's, those are, sounded to me like good suggestions. Let's hold that thought while we go to our 5:10 timetable agenda item, and we'll let you introduce that one.
Mr. President, City Commission. SLH has requested final plat approval. The site is located northerly of 40th Street West. The applicant is requesting the city commission to consider revising the final plat recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended four conditions. The lot boundaries terminate at the street riderways after public road dedications. The plat should be split into two lots rather than one. The new lot should consist of a lot dimension of 150 by 156. That would be the minimum lot size. And the plat should be, the plat shall depict a 50-foot-wide conservation easement with trees along the northern side of the newly created Lot 2. The applicant has submitted alternative number one, which is contained in your packet materials. That is their proposal to modify the planning commission's recommendation. It is within the same line of what the planning commission recommends, except that they are combining, except they are shrinking the lot width. They would like you to consider that in addition to the planning commission's recommendation. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Which alternative are you recommending approval of?
The planning commission recommended the first one. Alternative one is the alternative by the applicant. And at this point, I'm not recommending either of them. I will, the applicant is going to propose why they are submitting alternative one. I will let them provide their testimony to you, and then I can make a decision if you prefer a recommendation from me, Mr. President.
Okay. We're not currently in the public hearing part of this, because that public hearing has to do with rezoning.
This is for final plat approval. I believe final plat approval is a public hearing as well.
Is it?
It is not? Okay, I'm correct on that.
Okay, but, so what you're saying is that there is someone here from SLH to present at this point?
Absolutely. They have concerns with the planning commission's recommendation. They feel that that would limit one of their buildings and access to the site. They talked to me after the planning commission. I told them their alternatives or options that they have. As a city commission, you could either approve the planning commission's recommendation or the recommended plat. You can modify it, or you could reject it entirely, and also, you could, the applicant is providing an alternative to the planning commission for you to consider.
Okay. Well, at this time, then, we'd invite the representative or representatives of SLH to the podium. Just, you know, state your name, and we'll hear your remarks.
Mr. President, City Commissioners, my name is Tim Gross with SLH Properties. We're submitting the change from the plat that was submitted to the planning commission to the new one. And the reason is, is the original plat, once we got all of our easements and everything set back, our third building actually will extend into that Lot 2 and cut across the southwest corner of Lot 2. We have three buildings that are going along the west side of the plot, and the third one, as I said, cuts into that. And what we propose is to basically keep the acreage the same on that Lot 2 and just move it over in alignment with the Lot 1, Block 1 of the Brown subdivision. And that will allow our building, then, our third building, to actually fit there and not cross over into that Lot 2.
That's the only change?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, any comments or questions here by Commissioners?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Gross, I know that the idea of the Lot 2 was an attempt to form some compromise with your neighbor to the north. Concerned about buffer and whatnot. And I think more specifically, Lot 2 was created in case there was a sale from you folks to Mr. Brown, I believe. If that sale doesn't happen, then Lot 2 is really moot all the way around. Am I correct?
That is correct, Commissioner.
So the point is that this Lot 2 may be moot regardless of its size, if it doesn't get sold to Mr. Brown. The other thing we had talked about was this conservation easement. I suppose another alternative would be to resize Lot 2 the way you've suggested, but still continue that conservation easement to the west, to keep that buffer further west. Would that be an issue for you?
Commissioner Jackson, the only issue would be is if it, you know, on the, is how far we extend it to the west, which then, at some point, cuts off access to that, eventually it's a road that comes through there, and to get access out of the north side of that lot.
But if it were extended to that 100 feet, which was the original?
That would cause, the issue there would, Commissioner, would be, with the building running into the original Lot 1, that would be quite a corner to get around that building, then also to get through that 50-foot easement to get a vehicle through there. I guess we could look at that more closely with the engineers and see how much distance is left there if that easement were to continue over as originally plotted. It's going to limit the access of getting out on that north side of the lot. And again, the buildings are still kind of being shifted a little bit, but they end up getting pushed further back to the north, because we originally planned a 30, I think, 33-foot easement on the south boundary, which is now 75 feet. And so that's kind of shifted the buildings back further than anticipated, and it's starting to sc-. back further than anticipated, and is starting to squeeze that in to have access out the north side. Then we also gave, instead of a 10-foot easement for utilities on the western boundary, we now gave a 20-foot easement, which then, of course, pushed the buildings out further to the east.
Well, I think we should try to resolve it tonight if we can. But again, for the rest of you, the only reason Lot Two exists here is to try to accommodate some kind of a buffer to the property to the north. The original plat submitted had, did not have a Lot Two.
So, how do we resolve it tonight, Mr. Jackson?
I think we just have to satisfy ourselves, if we approve alternative one, we'd have to satisfy ourselves that that's enough of a buffer to Mr. Brown's property.
Mr. Kretan, any suggestions?
Uh, Mr. President, City Commission, I'm in favor of the alternative submitted by the applicant tonight. I think it meets the intent of what the planning commission was trying to achieve at the last meeting. I think, more than anything else, they wanted to have a 50-foot utility, 50-foot conservation easement along that northern property line, directly to the south of Mr. Brown's property, which would be achieved with that alternative. If that's where the board wants to go, or the commission wants to go tonight, I'd be in favor of that. The only addition would be that they need to have some additional language put on the plat, that that conservation easement, that no building activity shall incur within a conservation easement without approval from the city, without approval from the city of Dickinson. The reason for that is that we are the ones that review development and building plans. I think the conservation easement, any activity should be approved by the city. That would allow city staff to either approve that, now it could either be a driveway if it's necessary, or some kind of minor development. But, in essence, it would ensure that no building activity would occur within that 50-foot conservation easement. And I've spoken to the applicant, and they're, they're in agreement of that. The question tonight would be, do you want to continue to have a Lot Two, or do you feel, as Commissioner Jackson has already mentioned, that maybe that issue's a moot point, therefore, remove that, remove that portion of the plat tonight, and just have it as one lot with a 50-foot conservation easement?
I, I suspect we don't know what we want. Mr. Jackson might be the only one who, you know, really knows. I mean, this is a new issue for us. We haven't been part of the give-and-take discussions that, that led up to this, so.
And we've heard from one of the parties concerned. I guess I would like to hear from the other party concerned with alternative one, and get both sides of the issue, so that we can make a good informed decision. That'd be okay.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Henry Brown, and, you know, this, this is kind of what I suspected to happen. I mean, we, we worked hard at getting a compromise, and we compromised, and I have no problem with it. But then, all of a sudden, everything we got, you want to start taking it back away from us after we compromised that? Nobody's mentioned anything about this to me. This is the first I've heard of it. And I don't think that's right, you know, doing it that way. If somebody had talked to me first, you know, so I knew what was coming. But, the biggest thing out of that was to have the entrance into their lot kept the farthest to the west, to keep the high traffic from coming too close to my house. Because you get all those trucks running through there, and really close to my house, I mean, the dust, the noise, all that, that was the biggest thing. And what we compromised on kept their entrance to the very far west. And that, that was a good compromise. And I don't see why that should be taken away, no. That's my feeling.
The, let's call it alternate zero, the original alternate. You were fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
As, as we see it here, it's this-
Yeah, I understand you have to compromise.
Alternate one wasn't discussed with you, and so-
No, never heard about it.
And going back to alternate zero, it's the conservation line that you're most concerned with that blocks the access to that. So, you're not as concerned with Lot Two and Lot Two's size, or-
Not necessarily, as long as the entrance stays-
Stays to the west.
The west.
So-
The tree rolls go right up to it to block the noise, the dust, and so on.
So, Mr. Gross, if we looked at the alternative original, or alternative zero, if, if you move the western boundary of Lot Two to the east, what is the minimum movement there, that boundary, that would work for you guys?
Again, Mr. President, without looking at the map, but I would think if we had, if we were to move it to the west, that the minimum would be right in line with Lot Two, Block One of Brown subdivision, which is also a commercial, that land is also commercial. So, you'd have the buffer between there. So, if we move the conservation over to the west, I'm not sure how many feet that is, Mr. President, so it lines up with Lot Two, Block One of the Brown subdivision, and keep it in, in line with that, as that is also a res, a commercial subdivision. And then, it's in line with that, and, and, because originally, we had it on the, we moved it over to Lot One, Block One, which was the residential part.
Right.
But if we were to move it further to the, or, to, to the east side of Lot Two, Block One-
That would work for you, you think?
That is, that doesn't look like it's very far, just-
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how many feet that is, but that would, again, should have, if that road ever does get developed through there, that, that should provide enough ample room to not have to go back to the city and ask to put a driveway into part of that easement that is already set aside for conservation. I believe that would work for the SLH party, and if that works for Mr. Brown.
Does that work for you, Mr. Brown?
I believe it would, yeah, if we stay on the east side of Lot Two, Block One. Yeah, that does, that looks fine.
Mr. Gross, would you come up here for a sidebar? I've always wanted to do that, you know. I just, so you guys are talking that this would be the, the plane of the line right there?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. See that?
That works for you, then?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You can tell I'm an engineer, right?
Yep, got it.
Then everybody would be happy, and life would go on?
We can live with that, yeah.
We can live with that.
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Kretan, how do we do this tonight in such a way that we'd be done with it, or?
Uh, Mr. President, I think that you're looking at the original plat on that one submitted by the applicant, because what you could state is that you would recommend approval tonight, with the condition that the western edge of Lot Two would proceed easterly to the point, to the furthest-most point of Lot Two, Block One, Brown subdivision. That would move it to the east. That would be purport, or flush with that. That's what I'm understanding as the intent tonight. Is that correct?
I-
I understand the intent. Ultimately, when they submit the Mylar, I'll be able to confirm that before, obviously, the city signs that, so.
Did the clerk get Mr. Kretan's suggested motion down? Okay. Was there, would there be anything else in that motion we should have?
Uh, I would suggest that there would be a note that the conservation easement, it would state the conservation easement, that no activity, no building activity shall occur within a conservation easement without city approval. And that would be a note on the plat.
Okay.
That will clarify that issue, and then they'll have to get city approval in order to do so.
If a street would come through later, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Jackson, are you going to comment?
Mr. Kretan, my memory is telling me that there were some specifics at planning and zoning about the type of tree buffer, or not. Were there?
Uh, Mr. Jackson, I brought that up a couple times. You left it up to the city planner to make that call.
Okay.
I had spoken to the applicant, and I told him it would need to be a dense buffer.
Okay.
It's left up to the subjectivity of your city planner, so I hope you could live with that.
We can.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Frenzel.
As I understand it, the changes we're talking about making would be to the, the first page-
Alternate zero.
Alternate zero. But, there's a, the second page, the alternative plan has a 50-foot, or has a wider easement running north and south. We don't want that anymore?
With respect to your question, Commissioner-
My suggestion is we should make the changes to alternate one, as opposed to using zero. Because then we'd have the wider, you'd have, also have the wider easement running north and south. And then, my next question is, what about Lot Two? If he's not a buyer anymore, we don't need Lot Two.
That is correct. I don't see a need tonight to have a Lot Two, because I don't think that there's any agreement between the applicant and Mr. Brown. Therefore, it would seem to me that, as a city commission, you could just remove that requirement that you need to have a Lot Two. So, it'd just be one lot with a 50-foot utility easement.
My suggestion is we make the changes to alternate one, eliminating Lot Two as addition, in addition to what you said.
Sounds good to me, Mr. President.
That way, we ended with the 50-foot easement all-
Does that still sound good to you, Mr. Brown? Or did you still want that option of the, I don't know where you're at with that?
Well, I, the option of buying it isn't a big thing.
Okay.
But, the, the thing was how close they can build-
Build their, other buildings-
Yeah, how close it gets to me.
And so, you said a buffer standard, didn't you, that kind of?
With Commissioner Altman's, yes. The planning commission recommended a buffer of 50 feet. Land, uh, that would be a conservation easement with trees along the southern portion of that buffer, a dense buffer to be approved by the city planner. That was their recommendation.
Then how close can you build to that buffer? Right up?
You could build right up to the buffer. The buffer is similar to, it would be similar to an easement, in which there are no setbacks. In addition to that, it's just you would have your standard building setbacks. Which, in this case, the north side of that being industrial, I think you only have a 20-foot or 25-foot. So, the outside of that utility, or that conservation easement, you could build up to that. If they wanted to place a building, they could place it right, right adjacent to the conservation easement.
Okay.
Because that is above and beyond the existing setback standard for that, for that area.
All right.
Mr. President, maybe, maybe this may be easier. I, I don't know. I, I could propose a suggestion that, um, the utility, the conservation easement is what we're asking for. I guess we need to know the boundaries of that. So, basically, I would, my suggestion would be, you approve the final plat, based upon the conservation easement being 50-foot wide, proceeding from the, proceeding from the easternmost portion of Lot One, proceeding westerly until a point at Lot Two, Block One, Brown's addition. That's where it would terminate. That's what we're talking about. And then, in addition to that, a note on the plat that the conservation easement, that no building activity should occur without city approval. And my last suggestion would be that they need to include their 20-foot utility easement along the westerly property. The reason for that is that's where they're proposing to put your utilities, along the western property boundary, as depicted in alternative one.
And we would eliminate Lot Two?
Yes. That would be my suggestion. That's up to you to decide tonight.
Okay.
So, move.
Second.
And that's still good with both parties.
Yeah, now, but, did, did you follow what, what he just-
Yeah, I did. I guess that, that brings them to where they can be 100 feet closer than what we had.
Actually, I think it'll be about 52 feet. 52 feet closer than what-
Yeah, I, you know, I, I wouldn't make a big problem.
Nobody's going to have hard feelings with that.
I don't think so. The, the question I have is, how and when do you know that this easement is going to go through? I mean, the trees, when the city planners are going to do that, and is it going to happen? Who do you talk to if it doesn't happen?
I didn't catch the, the first part of your question, Mr. Brown, but I could answer that. It'll be up to me, unless the city commission wants to specify what that, what those trees will consist of, or further elaborate on the condition. Otherwise, it'd be left up to me to determine that. I will work with the applicant in providing a dense, a dense buffer, which normally would mean, I would prefer both conifers and deciduous trees, probably spacing of about 40 feet, or the, 40 to 50 feet, depending on the species at maturity, so that they would have more or less a dense, a dense buffer with a little bit of air in order, so you won't have the accumulation of, of the snow in the wintertime on some of your conifer trees. That would be my suggestion.
So, you would be Mr. Brown's contact point if he didn't feel like this was moving forward with the conservation easement?
Uh, he could contact me, absolutely. And the easement would be a perpetual easement, so if the trees died or something, they would need to replace them.
Okay, go on, get it done. Yeah, we have it done.
Mr. Gross, you, you're okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. While we have the motion and the second, is there any other discussion? Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson, I just want to make sure, at the last commission meeting, you made a, a motion to endorse a developers' agreement with SLH. I just wanted to report that that developers' agreement has been executed, and it relates to what's going on. So, I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Okay. And, we just want to make sure you're not going to complicate this anymore than-
Actually, trying to make it easier.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Now, there is a public hearing and rezoning petition, right? So, you want to introduce that, too?
Yes, Mr. President, City Commission. This is a rezone. SLH has requested a rezone from agricultural to limited industrial to construct the three buildings, as we've discussed previously. The site is located northerly of 4th Street West. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. And I'm available if you have any questions. I'll try not to further muddy up the waters.
Okay, so this is ordinance number, what?
1421.
1421. At, at this time, then, we'll declare the public hearing open. Anybody that wishes to comment regarding this proposed ordinance may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public wish to comment? No one from the public wishes to comment? We'll declare the public hearing closed. Any comments by other city staff or city commissioners? The ordinance is in your, your packet.
I would make motion for approval.
We have the motion to approve first reading and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, that completes the timetable agenda. We'll move back to item 4D. We were discussing the crew camp housing discussion, and, Mr. Kretan, you had just made some comments about things that, perhaps you would like to, additional things you'd like to see in the ordinance. Mr. Collin, were you able to kind of get those things down? That, do you have any comments regarding Mr. Kretan's?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I believe Mr. Kretan's comments were having some city ability to limit the number of units or the acreage, as well as providing for maximum possible acreage, also for a minimum. I think those are appropriate suggestions, and we can incorporate those into the final draft of the ordinance.
How about the security issue? Would it make sense for us to specifically mention that we require security? I mean, that'd be rather vague, just to say that, but at least it's a, I think it, it tells the commission and city staff that there are some security expectations there.
Mr. President, I would, I would agree with that. I think providing for a security plan or something like that is probably something that should be incorporated into the ordinance as well.
Okay.
Mr. President, if I could just add a note to that, I think that as part of the application for this, since I'll be, I'll develop an application and application materials that should be submitted with that, I could put as part of your application materials suggestions that you address these issues. In addition to that, obviously, it'd be up to the city commission to decide, you know, the merits of those, if you want to, if it's omitted, or if you do not like it, you feel it's insufficient, that you could add to it. that you could add to it. As staff, I would walk through it with the applicant and tell them that the city wants quality crew housing facilities, and these are items that I'd be looking for. I would provide my recommendation ultimately to you to, to either make a decision with staff or modify it accordingly if there is a disagreement between the applicant and city.
Okay. So I think that's a yes. And where were we on the alcohol one? Did we kind of generally reach consensus that we strike that? Okay, I think that's where we were. Any, any other changes that, that you would want?
Mr. President, a question for Mr. Kohl. At the last meeting, we talked about part of the law that seemed to be a little bit unclear with the ETZ. Do we know any more about that? We, we're, we're making a requirement that we'll annex, so by that, we're inferring that we have the jurisdiction.
Mr. President, Commissioner Jackson, there is some unclarity in the law, but I think the way that it will come out is that the city has preliminary jurisdiction within the ETZ to permit or not permit crew housing facilities. The ambiguity is who collects the fee. And I think for a crew housing facility that would be cited within the ETZ but outside of city limits, it would be the county that would be entitled to that fee. And obviously, with, within the city limits, both the county and the city are providing services. The city does provide some limited services within the ETZ, even for those properties outside of city limits. So I think our intent at this point is to sit down with the county and attempt to negotiate some sort of joint powers agreement where we can, can jointly administer the citing and the permitting and the fee structure for crew housing facilities in the county, within the ETZ, and within city limits.
Makes sense.
Now, excuse me, the city is, the commission is not acting on this ordinance tonight. That's why it's in here as a report. It'll, it'll come before us again where we'll hold a public hearing and take comments. But, but I do see someone from the audience, I think, would like to comment, so even though it would be kind of outside the normal process, we'll, we'll allow you to comment. Just come up to the podium, state your name, and certainly hear your comments.
My name's Karen May, and I too, I too went to Williston and looked at, and toured the Target Logistics complex up there. And one thing about the alcohol issue is, I think in order for you not to have NIMBYs come in and say, "Well, I don't want one of these things next door to me," things like requiring a security plan and the no alcohol will, I think, increase your level of community acceptance when one of these things are proposed for the, for the neighbors that are going to surround it. And, and the other thing would be, for the taxpayers in general, to say, "Well, you know, my police force is already pretty stressed out, and, you know, if these guys are going to be good neighbors and not require a lot of police attention, so they can deal with, you know, domestic violence and petty crime and vandalism and runaway kids and, you know, community policing." So the security plan and the non-alcohol would, would increase the community's confidence that their police force wasn't going to get sucked into spending a lot of time out there. So that would just be something I would like you guys to think about as you're thinking about the alcohol issue. It's like, wherever you plop these things down, you want it to be a good experience for the community, and you want the community to welcome it and, and think, "These guys are going to be good neighbors." And if they're Target Logistics, you, you want to attract developers who are like Target Logistics, because they do a very good job, and they do it all over the United States. They have lots of experience. You don't want somebody who isn't going to provide those kinds of things, because then that could give crew camps a bad name. That'd be my only comment.
All right, thank you. And we have a ways to go on this, but I, I think the sense that I have is that the five commissioners would prefer that the crew camps not have alcohol in them. It would be our preference that the operator make that part of their rules and policies, so they're responsible for enforcing them, not our police department. And if they don't follow their own policies, then I, I think they could be very, they could be in violation of their, see this be a special use permit? They'd be in violation of their special use permit and could be in danger of having their permit revoked. But I, I think that's really the only difference in our, our thinking right now, is make sure it's their responsibility as opposed to the police department's responsibility to enforce that, that particular rule. Anybody else wish to comment? Okay. We're not taking any action tonight. We'll, Mr. Kessel, do you, and Mr. Kohl, would you like to bring it back one more time as a report before we bring it back for second reading?
We have a lot of changes, President Johnson, but Mr. Kohl feels as though we can bring you back a second reading if you're willing to entertain that.
How about the commission? Do you want to see it again as a report, or do you want to see it for second reading and final action?
We did first reading.
We did first reading. And see, that was just a week ago, because we've had these two meetings back to back. Are we under, I mean, do you have someone knocking pretty seriously on your door right now on this item?
President Johnson, as we reported at, at the last commission meeting, we've had several phone calls, at least six different providers that are interested in bringing crew camps to Dickinson. But I've had nobody, and since then, we've had an additional person come in and visit. But I've had nobody come in and actually plop down a plan and say, "This is what I want to do, this is the size, where can I go?" Now, I'd refer, or ask Planner Corton if he's had any other experiences either.
Mr. President, City Commission, I have, I guess you could call them tentatively, potentially, three people that are serious about this. It's just they are waiting until the ordinance is finally finished in order for them to look at, and then they will proceed forward potentially. So I think there are, I think there are people that are waiting for this to be concluded, and then we may have an application very shortly after, after we have this officially adopted.
Okay. Be my recommendation, then, that we bring it back at the next meeting for second reading and final passage, that kind of action. You can still make some changes to it. If we find at a later date that we really missed something, you can always amend the ordinance, too. So I suspect we're close enough, and Mr. Kohl took notes tonight, he can incorporate the suggestions that we had. Also at that meeting, then, there will be a public hearing, and we'll allow, certainly hear, hear public comments on that. Anybody disagree?
Mr. President, I'd just say that I, I don't think whether the city allows alcohol or does not allow alcohol there would deter these people from starting construction. I mean, they aren't building that based on whether they're going to have alcohol or not alcohol in there.
I would suspect that it's probably general operating procedure for the, the operators of the crew camps, that their policy is not to allow it. But I don't know for certain.
And we still have the ability to enforce any other condition or restriction before we approve the permit. That, that's still in here, no matter what, so.
I think it should be their job to enforce it, not taking the time of our police department to enforce it if they don't.
Exactly.
Okay. We have a plan? Mr. Kessel, then, are you, you're going to continue on with the reports?
Thank you, President Johnson, and I certainly will. The next is just a construction update on the transit building. Just wanted to make sure the commission is aware that we have set up a regularly scheduled construction meeting related to the transit building. And again, as a reminder, this building is north of Walmart and east of the water tower that is up on the north side of town. The first meeting will be this Wednesday, where we'll talk construction. So we're looking forward to that building moving forward, and hopefully have a completion date of October of this year. Next item is the DOT meeting we have scheduled with the North Dakota Department of Transportation. It'll happen, occur on July 21st here in this room. That will include a tour of the community and a lot of the areas that are affected, obviously, from transportation. We will focus on the proposed truck bypass or, and Highway 22 signalization and, and other areas of concern. For instance, our interstate exchanges and a few other things. All those things that were identified in the oil impacts document that was created earlier this year and provided to our legislators and anybody else who has interests. So we're excited about that meeting and sharing our concerns. There's been a great deal of funds provided to the DOT this year through the legislative process, and we're hoping that they will apply some of those funds to some of the needs in, in and around the city of Dickinson.
Who is, who will be representing the North Dakota DOT?
There's about seven different members that will come. They will include Paul Benning, who is the local government designee, all the way up to the head of the organization. The commissioner is slated to be here as well, so.
So Francis Ziegler is scheduled to be here?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yep. If that concludes questions on that item, I'll move on to the next, the city hall renovation. This is a, just kind of bringing this to your attention as a city commission, we have lost the use of a, a meeting room here at city hall. We lost that several months ago, if not a, over a year ago, when we hired staff. That's currently being used for building inspections. We don't have enough office space at city hall to accommodate all the staff. Now, we are very concerned that with the addition of even more staff, finding locations for them to reside within city hall is becoming increasingly difficult. We really don't have anywhere else for them to go. And so we are reviewing the idea of renovating some of our basement space and creating some offices, and then moving some departments that have the least amount of public input on a daily basis into that basement setting. We've been having these discussions at the leadership team level for some time, so we hope to have at least some ideas and thoughts for you in the near future, and may ask that a, we engage an architect to, to at least review some of our thoughts and, and then turn that into a construction plan. So if there's any, any questions about that, I'll certainly take those. If not, the next item is a public works building. This has been something in the discussion stages for several years already. We are becoming increasingly difficult for our, our staff to, to occupy the buildings that, that we currently have. We are at a point in our, our city's development where we can probably maximize the value of those buildings if, for alternative purposes, if we choose to build at, at an alternate site. The site that we have selected has had multiple offers on it. It remains a, a land that's been for sale on our, our sheet, but we have declined those offers with anticipating a public works building. This, this may be a time for the city commission to actually review again. We were at the stage last, if you recall, last year, where we did issue a RFQ. We did entertain proposals. We did get to the point where an architect was selected, but we did, we've not brought that architect to the city commission. So we would like to move forward with this project as a staff and bring to you a recommendation regarding that, unless there's concerns expressed by the body.
The concern that I would have is that you don't bring these to us one at a time, because one at a time, you can, we're likely to say yes. I think, and there's a risk to that, that we say yes to more than we can afford. So this needs to be part of the comprehensive budget planning process, so we can see how this all fits together, and along with all the other priorities, make sure that, that what we're doing is, is affordable, that we don't get too far ahead of our revenues.
And that's a nice segue into a topic that I'd like to just briefly mention that's not on the agenda, and that's our wastewater treatment plant and, and some funding options. We did task the government affairs contract, KLJ, with coming up with ideas and thoughts on funding that facility. That obviously is a large ticket item for the city of Dickinson, approximately $25 million. I have provided you with a copy of the document that they produced. It does go through and identify several state, federal grants and/or loans that we could use to finance the wastewater treatment facility. I give this to you for, for your review. We, of course, will make a recommendation regarding this project and how we think it should be funded, but I wanted you to be aware that these are options, at least some of them are options. Some of them, it was really nice to have KLJ go through and mention that, that some of these we thought may be options maybe aren't any options any longer. So I think it's a fairly comprehensive document and one that I, I think we'll find helpful as we try to finance a large ticket item and a higher priority item for the city. And then the last item, if I can, I'd just like to mention that the Southwest REAP, which stands for Southwest Rural Economic Area Partnership, is a planning region in southwest North Dakota. They are pursuing a grant from the USDA. They've actually been requested to pursue a grant from the USDA Farm Service and Rural Development. They'd like to create a, or apply for a regional sustainability, community planning grant, it's called. It would cover, it'd be about $1.2 million over the course of three years if they were awarded this grant. The idea behind the grant is to review the impact of economic activity in and around the area, both related to energy, to agriculture, to manufacturing, and determine what responses could be made related to that impact, so that each community and/or county within the region can develop plans to, to benefit as best they can from, from the activity that's going on. At this point, there is a, there's no funding being requested by each individual city or county to participate in, in this grant. They simply want us to know that they're, they are pursuing the grant and that they would like for the city of Dickinson to participate in the future, once that grant application is provided. As they move forward, I'll certainly keep you posted. If you have any desires to be updated prior, let me know, and I'll certainly do that. That would conclude my report, unless there's questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any questions for Mr. Kessel or Mr. Kohl? All right, hearing done, we'll go to tab five, public safety, and Chief Seabuck from the fire department?
President Johnson, commissioners, tonight I'd like to report on the June activities of the Dickinson Fire Department. We had 23 responses in the month of June compared to 20 last year and 20 in 2009 for the same month. The incidents included nine responses by our alert crews, seven responses handled by full-time personnel, three calls that were handled by officers on call, two general alarm fires, and two night duty responses. We have 135 total responses from January 1st through June 30th of 2011. That's a 26% increase over the same timeframe of 2010, 47% increase over the same timeframe of 2009. Fire prevention and public education, our staff was busy with the Safety City, which we presented a fire safety program to over 40 area children. Our staff recorded fireworks, public service announcements, and issued three permits for the sale of fireworks within city limits. In addition to 77 routine inspections, 64 follow-ups, 11 construction, three childcare inspections, 31 miscellaneous inspections, which included- inspections, 31 miscellaneous inspections, which included six lectures, demos, or tours. June training was presented by our special operations team members and consisted of the entire department receiving a refresher on hazardous materials operations. Also in June, we were able to attend the State Firefighters Convention in Wapperton. June 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, Assistant Chief Ed Stickel, Larry Callahan, Captain Joe Monte, Inspector Mark Selly, and myself were able to attend. During this convention, Assistant Chief Stickel received a 35-year service pin, a 35-year veterans' pin. Chief Larry Callahan received a 25-year veterans' pin. Larry is a few years late in getting that. He's actually got about 28 years with us, I believe. Deb Barrows, myself, and Curtis Freeman received Courage to Be Safe Challenge Coins for the efforts that we've put forth in presenting the Courage to Be Safe Program to area fire And also at this time, I'd like to recognize local businesses, organizations, and individuals for the support that our department has received related to recent fundraising efforts involving projects at our training site. One of the commission meetings, as you all know, Musket Corporation donated $14,000. The Eagles Club, $2,500. Whiting Oil, $1,500. American Bank Center, $1,000. Jerry and Kim Schwartz personal donation of $1,000. St. Anthony Club, $750. Oscar Knudsen, a personal donation of $100. Dickinson Ready makes $500 in material in addition to five rescue harnesses donated to our special operations team from SolarB and a $250 donation received from Marathon Oil for a recruitment and retention program. Altogether, from the first of the year, donations totaling over $22,000 in support of the volunteer fire department. We'd like everyone that donated to know that the projects that they helped fund are being worked on and are nearing completion. Equipment donated is in service and they have our thanks for the tremendous support shown. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments or questions for Chief Seabuck? All right, thank you. Captain Dossinger for the Police Department.
Good evening again, Mr. President, members of the commission. I have before you tonight the June monthly report from the Dickinson Police Department. In June, we had 85 accidents. 24 of those accidents were hit-and-run accidents, three reported injury-related accidents, and 574 traffic stops were conducted. We have seen an increase in motorcycle accidents within our city limits for the month of June. From those traffic stops, there were 579 citations and warnings issued. You can see 173 of them related speeding incidents, 84 for not using your seat belts, 89 related to traffic control devices such as red light violations, stop signs, yield signs, and other traffic control mechanisms, and 233 of them are for other violations.
Now, the other category is pretty large. What typically goes into other?
You're going to have traffic violations such as care required, which is commonly a citation issued out of accidents. You're going to have others such as child restraint devices, several other organs violations, failure to register your motor vehicle.
Okay.
Several other ones. In the month of June, we did have 2,077 incidents. As you can see, a large portion of them were traffic-related incidents, our response to accidents, and being proactive in our traffic enforcement efforts. 81 of those were disorderly calls. Those are calls such as intoxicated subjects, loud party calls, and nuisance-related calls. We did have 47 theft and burglary calls. Those are calls related to thefts from motor vehicles, possibly theft from residents and businesses. We had 40 drug-related arrests, 27 arrests related to domestic violence calls and simple assaults within our community. And we had 1,218 other responses for various calls. As you can see by this comparison, compared to 2010, we have had an increase, a consistent increase. Hopefully, that will level off here very soon.
So, June of this year, roughly 2,000, June of 2010, 1,000.
Correct.
So, a 100% increase.
That's correct. I believe it was actually 997 or 998 calls for last month of June.
Okay.
Training for the month of June, we were very active. We sent two members to a marksman's service school in Tennessee. It was five days. Senior Patrolman Schuman and Officer Sims attended that school. They are both members of our tactical team. We did send two officers to a methods of instruction school that allows them to come back and teach fellow officers certified law enforcement credit. That was Officer Peterson and Officer Ware. And that was in Bismarck and that was four days in length. As you know, we do have an increase in a lot of Spanish-speaking individuals in our community. We are trying to remain proactive in sending officers to basic Spanish training. That was in Bismarck. We're trying to send as many of our officers to that training as possible. We also had a, sent an individual to ICAC training, which was in St. Louis. Investigator Lyons attended that school. That was five days in length and that allows us to conduct investigations on internet-related crimes, specifically them targeting or luring young children. We also conducted a pressure pipe control techniques training within house. That was a day in length. That was conducted by Investigator Klausert and Officer Wallace, and about three-fourths of our patrol division attended that training. One team that we often don't talk about are our four-legged officers, Canine Talon and Canine Buster and their handler Sergeant Mike Cannell and Senior Patrolman Corey Lee. They remain very active in our department. For 2011, they were used 141 times, 12 times in school-related activities, 16 for public relation events. They were used 89 times for narcotic usages, and they had 24 narcotic arrests. Those are arrests that normally go on detected unless they hit on the vehicle or residence. So, they have been very active for us. Last Thursday, myself and 11 other members did travel to Bismarck. We attended the funeral of Sergeant Kinnear in support of the Bismarck Police Department. It was a very tear-jerking and moving event. They had a representative from law enforcement agency across the state and the nation there. That was a very impressive event and hopefully never have to attend one of those again. The other thing I wanted to touch on is kind of the rumors and fish stories that are kind of going around our community. Unfortunately, they're not originating from the lake, but rather rumors circulating about sexual assaults, gang activity, and other events that are being posted on Facebook. These fish stories are kind of gathering momentum and I just want all the public, let's public know that if there's any information that they feel, that we feel needs to be disseminated, the Dickinson Police Department will definitely disseminate that information to protect the community. Do you have any questions?
Comments or questions? Mr. Kessel?
Captain Dossinger, you mentioned there's been a 100% increase in the amount of calls for service. Does that mean crime has gone up 100% in Dickinson?
No, that doesn't mean that crime's going up. It means that a huge portion, you know, our traffic enforcement's efforts have definitely been stepped up, more pro-active events such as our community-related events. Educational activities have also gone up. Part of being a, part of community police things is identifying problems and finding a solution for that. As a department, we identified that we have a lot of traffic-related issues within our community. We receive a lot of complaints about the driving behavior, be it red light violations or be it road rage incidents. And part of that, we're definitely increasing our traffic-related activities. So, you're also going to see those slowly drive up the numbers of our calls for service as well.
Do you have more or less staff this time last year handling those calls? Where are you at staff-wise?
Right now, we have 30 sworn officers on staff. We are the same as we were last year.
Exact same number of officers handling twice as many calls.
We are happy. We just got one officer back from his, he served a tour flood response with the National Guard. We just got him back last week, so we're happy to get him back and we are fully staffed. And we got the permission to add an officer, you know, August 1st. So, we're greatly anticipating that.
It's possible a year ago at this time, I mean, even though you were authorized for 30, you probably weren't fully staffed. I mean, that, you know, due to turnover and I think we had one or two officers overseas.
That's correct.
So...
We are talking authorized spots for...
Right.
Okay.
We probably actually have more officers on the ground right today than one year ago, even though it's the same number of authorized positions.
That's correct.
Other comments, questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to Tab 6, Public Works. And the first item there is a rezoning petition and we'll let Planner Catan introduce that item.
This is a rezoning petition from R2 to R3. This is the second reading of the rezoned petition. There's been no changes from the first reading. The site is located at the southwest corner of Museum and Sims. Mr. President?
Thank you. This time, we take any comments from anyone in the public that would like to comment regarding ordinance number 1420. If you'd like to comment, just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. No one from the public wishes to comment, further comments by city commissioners or other city staff? No one wishes to comment? Would there be a motion then regarding second reading and final passage?
I would make the motion for approval.
The motion for approval and second, any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And I think the next three or four items are yours, Mr. Soren, so...
Thank you, President Johnson and city commissioners. The first item I do have is another development impact fee application. This one comes from Dan Porter, who is wanting to complete the water sewer and street improvements on 23rd Avenue East between the I-94 Business Loop and East Villard. There has been some development on the street. It's currently a gravel street. You may recall a portion of this, there was water and sewer put in a few years ago. This project will complete that water and sewer as well as curb and gutter and pave the street. Part of the reason for the change the last time was because of a couple of property owners between the developed street and Mr. Porter's who were against the improvements. I have spoken with both of them on this project. We did receive a letter of protest from one of them and about the same day I received the letter, he called and said that he had decided if we were going to do something, now is probably the time to get it done. And so, he wasn't going to protest anymore. And the project is approximately $500,000 to do the work. It is eligible for commercial, industrial, development impact fees, and we are recommending approval of the project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Soren. And it's resolution number...
It's, President, it's going to be 42-2011.
Any questions or comments by commissioners? Do we have the money to do this?
Yes, we do. Currently, out of the $3 million that's established for the commercial industrial side, we've only had one request, which is $600,000 has been approved. Therefore, we've got the dollars available for the commercial side.
Okay. We, a couple of meetings ago, had a, you know, a pretty lengthy discussion on, you know, on our policy here, and I think you gentlemen were going to go back and kind of rethink things through and based upon the discussion that you had here, put together a proposal to modify the current resolution that we're operating under. Have you done any work on that?
We've had some discussions. We haven't done any work at this point, other than putting it on paper, I mean, other than the discussions we've had. Unfortunately, our office is short of staff as the engineering specialist has left us and we're trying to hire an assistant, hoping to get that stuff under, taken care of within the next couple of weeks here. And we'll sit down and in August try to have a report back to you as to how we see this going. There have been some good discussions about drastically changing the program though, and that's kind of some of the holdup, some of it being the inspection of the projects that we're struggling with. We put that burden on developers currently and we sometimes are losing sight of it from a city's perspective and we're looking at trying to capture some of that through this program maybe, to where we fund the construction administration of the projects through the impact fees first and then fund their portion second. Potentially is one idea that's been thrown out there to bring back to the table, as well as looking at the dollar limits that are there and are they relevant to the size of projects that we're looking to do.
Any discussion here by other commissioners? Is there a motion then on for item B? There is a resolution in your board book.
I move we approve the resolution.
Number again? 42.
42, 2011, for 23rd Avenue East construction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, the motion is second. Further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Let's move to item C.
Item C is the engineer's report for the downtown improvement district number five. This is the improvement district that maintains our parking lots for the downtown parking area. We're estimating that the cost over the next five years to do that's going to be $100,000 and are suggesting a $20,000 per year assessment for that improvement district. The maintenance that are included in that is chip seals, patching, some reconstruction, striping, signage, and other administrative costs, which might include some snow removal as well. This is the program that we're using to develop a new parking lot on the south side of Villard, and it's a very good program for us to help fund the upkeep and maintenance of those parking lots.
Okay. Mr. Coley, I assume this is 43 then?
That is correct.
All right. Any questions for the engineer? Any comments regarding his recommendation here, this resolution? That, it's resolution number 43. It is in your board book. Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
Mr. President, we approve resolution number 43-2011.
We have the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any other discussion? No discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I do have one question. What is the date construction is to start on the parking lot on Villard?
I spoke with Highlands Engineering earlier today. They are having some issues or concerns with the railroad is kind of the holdup right now, trying to define that boundary as to get the parking lot put in. Other than that, as soon as they get those issues resolved, then we'll be going out for bids. And I don't have a firm date for you, but we're still shooting to get that done this fall. Thank you.
Mr. Soren, you have an item D?
Item D is the next step. It's the necessity for improvements for the downtown improvement district number five. It's the next step in the process of the improvement district that is in front of you. Without this, we would be lacking the abilities to provide the maintenance that's required and needed on... and needed on those parking lots, and based on that, we're asking the commission to approve the necessity, the need for the improvement.
And, Mr. Coley, this is number 44?
Correct.
Okay, and, Mr. Soren, I'm assuming this process was, is part of the Sentry Code?
Yes.
And we're just, okay. All right, you've heard the engineer's report recommendation. Any comments or questions by commissioners?
Mr. President, I'll move for approval of resolution necessity 44-2011.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Other discussion? No discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Anything else?
If I could, I don't have it on the agenda, but I would like to take a couple minutes and talk about some of the projects that we have active. We do have our planning study that's going on out at the landfill. We are trying to set up a time at one of the commission meetings in August when the engineers can come out and report on that project for you as to how our master plan is going and how they see things operating out there. We have been actively working on the wastewater treatment facility. I did go down and meet with the State Health Department about a week ago because of some of the limit issues we are having for our discharge and the possibility of some of the improvements we may have to do in the interim between the time we get our new facility up and running. And today, and we were looking at almost a $3.8 million project potentially, that I think we're working with the Health Department to avoid having to do that so we can continue to move on our plant without that added cost. We have been trying to irrigate more, do some other things, but to give you an example of some of the issues that we're faced with, you may recall at one of the previous reports, we were at 1.8, 1.9 million gallons per day going into the facility. Through May and June, we were at the 2.5 to 2.7 average, which is quite a bit above what the normal capacity for the facility is. We are seeing that come back down, and we're attributing a lot of that massive increase to groundwater surcharging of our lines and possibly even some pumps being pumped into the sewer system. And so, we're trying to address those issues as well to try and minimize that impact to our facility. So, we are, we're continuing to move forward with that project. We do have several water main sewer, street projects through the development impact fees. With the Country Oaks, we've got street construction underway. Cook Subdivision, they're doing grading in street water sewer, which is northwest part of town. Painted Canyons moving ahead. State's Fifth and Sixth are moving forward, and they had started paving streets last week. We had to get that shut down as they had some compaction issues, and they're digging some of that out and recompacting on those. Diamond Acres, be directly west of the DOT, they're moving forward with their water sewer and street construction up there. So, there's several things happening around town right now that are keeping us busy. As I did mention, we are in the process of interviewing for the Assistant City Engineer. We've had six phone interviews, looking to try and get possibly four of those to come to town for onsite interviews. We did feel four very qualified candidates, and so, we're narrowing that down. And along with that, we're also in the process of advertising for our engineering specialist who does our GIS CAD work to try and get that position filled as well.
Anything else?
I think that's all for now.
Okay. Any comments or questions then for the engineer? All right, thank you. Any reports by city commissioners? Not anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. No one from the public. Chair, entertain a motion then to adjourn.
I'll move.
We have the mo, we have the...